Okay, thank you very much for coming. This is part of our regularly scheduled board meeting. The first item, obviously, is going to be the town hall discussing roofs. But we'll go through and, once the town hall on roofs is finished, we'll move on to the rest of our agenda. Call the meeting to order, Don, yes? Jerry?
Here.
Jay?
Here.
Sharon?
Here.
Howard?
Here.
Robert?
Here.
And Mark?
Here.
Very good. First order is the reading and approval of the minutes of Monday, October 28th. It's a 2:00 PM meeting where we mainly discuss amendments to our rules and regulations. Do we all have a chance to read the minutes?
Yep.
Okay. No comment, approved by general consent. Next item is the treasurer's report. Mark?
Okay, this is as of October 31st. We have in the operating account $629,570. In the reserve accounts, $1,982,954. And special assessment account, $420,954. Total of $33,3479. We have $960,000 invested with a lot of CDs, earning somewhere in the neighborhood of $27,000 a year in interest. And $220,000 with the money market, the operating account, earning another thousand. And there's another $266,000 in a CD earning 4.65% interest.
Thank you. Robert, do you have any special items on your budget?
No, many changes to the variance since the last meeting were projected at the end of the year with about $62,000 surplus, which is not what we need to operate the surplus bonds that will be...
Any other questions for the board? Any other questions from the audience on the budget? As I've said before, you can go and speak with Robert. Just make an appointment and discuss the details if you are so inclined. Okay. That gets the usual business out of the way, and I'd like to talk about roofing. Can you all hear me?
Yeah.
No.
Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Usually I see Fred in the back of the room. I don't see him today, but... Before I begin, I would like to announce that this portion of the board meeting, dealing with roofs, is being recorded and will be available for viewing on our Tivoli Lakes website in a few days. Over the past several months, the board has been keeping the community informed on our thoughts and discussions regarding our roofs. We had a report at our meeting on September 24th, October 8th, a column in the Tivoli Lakes Times, mailed the wording of the proposed amendment to each homeowner as the 14-day notice, and sent out a lengthy email providing more background and inviting the community to this town meeting. I am sure all of you at this town hall have read all of this material. I will end the highlights and then open it up for comments and questions, then the board will continue with other business. Our goal is to consider your comments and take a vote on the final wording at our meeting on November 25th and adopt an amendment to our roofing regulation. Our current rule in the ARB Architectural Review Board Manual is only the type of material with color matching as close as possible to the originally installed materials may be employed. That's the extent of our existing regulation. Recently, the state of Florida amended statute 720 as it pertains to HOA rules and administration, requiring the HOA to specifically address the color and style and any other factor deemed relevant by the board. And a parcel owner may be required to adhere to an existing unified building scheme regarding the external appearance of a structure. The question has come up, in order to comply with this, should we amend our rules to allow something other than what we now have, which currently results in a fairly homogeneous appearance in roof, color, material, and shape? The Board of Directors, after discussion with the ARB and the Rules Committee, and in consideration of the new state provision, has proposed an amendment to our current rule, which was in the mailing and e-blast that will be shown on the screen. That one sentence is no longer one sentence. It follows both the questions asked by the ARB to us to address, as well as the new state regulation of what should be considered in the roofing specification. You can see it goes on quite a bit. I won't read the whole thing. It's been mailed, emailed, and it's in a number of places in the community. So, please, just take note that the one sentence is in the beginning there under section two, and it is proposed to amend that by substituting the, under roofs, the style and shape, the color, the external appearance, material, and other factors deemed relevant. And if you remember, that's exactly what the state is asking each community to do. It all seems fairly reasonable, but there are some differences. The first is in the, under style and shape, we're saying that barrel or flat shape individual tiles are permitted. Now, as you all know, in our community, we all have barrel tiles. So this is a possible change. The second is on your color. It says, "shall match the family of colors as currently exists in the community and may include a light to medium gray." And then some of the manufacturers...
Where?
Yes? Oh, I'm sorry. Now, in going through this, some of the manufacturers in their color selection have indicated that they have a terracotta, or a tan, or a brown. Then they sort of qualify it, you could also order it with a streak. What's a streak? A streak is an option that you can order, but from what we can tell, it is not a through color. It does not go through the entire tile. It may penetrate a sixteenth of an inch or so. It provides a highlight for the first few years, and then, 20 years later, a lot of our roofs did have these streaks, but they fade out. So it's not a through color, but it is something that the manufacturers do offer, and therefore we put it in as part of this discussion. Other item is that we're specifying that it be concrete tile. There are other types of tile out there, but we've decided to recommend that we continue with the concrete tile. Now essentially, that are the substantive changes included in this proposed amendment. We recognize that this is a complicated matter and introduces several new provisions with Number one, the shape, and we have those in front here, a couple, we have the flat tile, and the second group over there, we have the traditional barrel tile. Each of these options, the flat tile and the different color, will result in a different visual appearance in the community. Flat tiles may also perform differently than the barrel shape and conveying rain runoff, both on the tile surface and on the underlayment. And the flat surfaces, especially in a lighter color such as gray, may tend to show dirt and stains more readily. But these are two, a couple of options that the board, as indicated, would like to have the community discuss. When an entire community is originally built, all the roofing is made of the same material and shape, and except for a color variation, they all have a similar appearance. It is only after 20 or 25 years, when roofs need replacement, that differences may come into play. Individual members of the board, the ARB and the Rules Committee, all have a different opinion on some of these new provisions, and before any final decision is made by the board, we are holding this town meeting to solicit input from the community in general and not just the 20 or 30 that normally attend our board meetings. As I have said, the purpose of this town hall is to solicit input from the residents here at this meeting, as well as comments received over the next few weeks until November 25th, at which time we will consider all the comments and hopefully vote then on emotions presented or any amendments there too. So, I said that sets the groundwork for today's town meeting. I'd like to open it up to the board. Do you have any comments before we open it up to the audience? Jerry Hale?
I do not think we should allow flat roof tiles in Tivoli. Unlike homes being built today and in the past few years, which have a more contemporary or modern look, our homes have a Mediterranean architecture. Flat tiles fit well with the modern contemporary look, but barrel tiles are the appropriately designed match for the Mediterranean look of our homes. The architects and the builders of our homes will all agree. The communities in our area that were built around when Tivoli was built, or slightly before us and are actively in their roof replacement period, are, with rare exception, not allowing flat tiles for the reason I've just stated. In fact, I was recently discussing this with a friend at a very large adult community nearby, where many homes are currently dealing with replacing their roofs, and only barrel style tile tiles are permitted. He commented to me that they would have a revolt on their hands if flat tiles were permitted. I fully understand that this is a major investment, and in theory, residents should have the right to make their own choices on which tile they want. But the reality is that we have chosen to live in an HOA, which means that we no longer have the same level of autonomy that we probably had in our previous homes. The choices we make as individual homeowners could compromise the overall look of the whole community. Part of my responsibility as a board member is to do what I can to assure that our community maintains its aesthetic integrity with a consistent look throughout. Having flat tiled roofs intermingled with barrel tiled roofs will detract from the overall beauty of our community. That's the way most other adult communities in our age group with similar architecturally designed homes feel, and I believe they are right. And it's not analogous to changing your coach lights to more contemporary ones. Coach lights are appendages on the wall or atop columns. They are not a massive, permanent, integral part of the home the way a roof is. I don't want to see us take a step back when someone compares classy look and beauty of Tivoli to our competition. I think we should keep the pristine upscale look of the homes in our community, and a barrel style roof with the Mediterranean facade of our homes guarantees that.
Thank you, Jerry. By the way, the way we're going to vote is by the number of applause that we have. So, looking for the other few points, I hope you applaud just as readily.
Do you have an applaud here?
Now for the minority report.
There it is, I knew it would be there.
Doesn't Jerry write beautifully? He really does. In fact, if I have to write something that's going to go out to the community, the first person I give it to is Jerry Hale. In fact, it's a little-known fact that he did a proofreading and actually made some changes to none other than the Gettysburg Address. Well, originally, he was going to do it his 87 years. He says, "Let's punch this up with four score and seven."
I'm going to bring up pictures of roofs. This picture shows a contrast of a barrel roof and a flat, one in gray, of course, and one, if you wish, terracotta.
Well, wait a minute, go back out to this aspect again. You have the curved windows. It's not a flat, square window, so it's not a all-modern size of that building. They both have the same type of windows and all. When you get up, when you go real close, you can see it's a flat tile. When you're driving down the street, it really doesn't even show that flat because it still has a couple inches of thickness to it. Well, this is the look that you see when you're driving down the street. Okay, zooming in. They're overlapping, and let me give you some background here. This is Woodfield Punching Club. Over the summer, four of us got into my huge Design Cube. It was Robert and myself, and Ivan, who's head of ARB, and Jerry Hale. And we went over, I was able to get us in, and we drove through the neighborhood. I'm surprised we weren't arrested because it looked like we were casing out the joint. It really did. I mean, he's taking pictures, and someone's taking notes. But anyway, we went through the different neighborhoods, and they're older than ours. And so a lot of the roofs have been redone. And we basically all came away, we really did, all four of us, with, hey, you know what? This doesn't look so bad, we could live with that, if that's what people wanted. My concern and Howard's concern is, if you give up your right to choose down the road, you may be sorry. So, with that in mind, a lot of decisions that we've been making in this community... I've got to raise this up, I'm much taller. Have been to go to a more contemporary look than what the builder originally put in. If we ever have a front entrance, and I have my doubts, but if we ever have a front... Sorry then. It is a modern wall. It is not a wall topped with tiles or anything like that. How many of you, raise hands, how many of you remember the foyer, the old foyer in this building with the brick on the wall? How many of you would love to see that back? I mean, come on. It was ugly, but that's what the builder put in for the Tuscan look. How many of you remember the tile in that great room? It was ugly as sin. It is so much better now. We are slowly moving to a slightly more contemporary version of the original architecture. All of the fixtures that we're putting on these buildings are more modern. A lot of the fixtures that people are putting on their homes are more modern. Our feeling is that... Well, all right, let me give you an example. When the palette opened up for the colors of our homes, I think it was 2019, Robert?
I think so.
Originally, Nate and I picked something in the beige family. We had green. It was time for a change, we picked something in the beige family. And we were happy with it, that was fine. People started painting their homes, and there were several homes that were done in gray, and we said, "Wait a minute, we really liked that." And so I ran up to Theresa, I said, "Can I still change it?" She said, "For me, yes, for everyone else, no." And we changed our choice, and at least I had a choice to do that. If we lock ourselves in to just the barrel tiles with just the one color, you just don't have a choice.
It would be sad, wouldn't it?
Okay, so it's more than one color, but it's still the same family. By the way, if you want to see what a streak looks like, the first barrel tile has a streak to it. You know, the homes in our community, when they were built, the color of the tile was chosen by the builder depending on the color of the home that you chose. And those colors went from a beige roof to what I had, which was a dark red, what with a, like a gray stripe in it, which went well with the dark green. It was a good combination. And we are 18, 19 years later. In full sun, you don't see the streaks, but if it's an overcast day and you don't have that sun bouncing right off of it, you can still see that streak in there even after 18 or 19 years. So it's not totally bleached out, it's still there. The color palette opened things up, and yet, we didn't ruin the look of the community. I don't think it hurt the sales of homes in the community with adding more colors. And I don't think giving people a choice on another color or another tile shape is going to ruin the sales of this community. I think it actually makes it look better. You're spending $60,000, $50,000, $60,000, shouldn't you have the right to make a change if you want to make a change?
No.
Well?
Okay, would you please let him continue?
I mean, we're listening to you and helping to make this decision, but there's, and that's why the lights go up here. But we're not all in agreement, and that's why we want to open this thing up. Right now, I'm probably in the minority. We'll see when it comes time to actually make a decision. I'm just, you know, let's talk about human nature for a second. The first person who's going to change this roof, let's say we allow it, and you now have a gray roof in your neighborhood, and you're driving up to your house, and you say, "Oh my God, look at that roof." And the second time you drive up the neighborhood, you're going to say the same thing, and on the third day, maybe. And by the fourth, you have other things on your mind, and you don't even see it. And that's human nature. If someone puts a new landscaping next door to you, and you love that new tree, you see it the first few times, and then you don't, because you're thinking about, what are you making for dinner, or what is that doctor's appointment going to be like? Any change we make, you see it for a couple days, and then you don't. And I don't think that this board should be pulling away rights to people who live in this community. It's not fair. That's not why we got on here, to be pulling away your rights. And again, it's a minority view, but we have enough pulling away of our rights these days, I don't think this should be one of them.
Okay. I guess, Robert, do you want to chime in or let the public? He's a smart man. Okay, at this time, we'll open it up to the audience. If you can line up in front of the microphone, as we usually do. Keep it brief if you would. We have our normal business to get to after this is over. So, we'll start out with Fran. Get up to the microphone, speak loudly.
Okay, Fran Eisenberg, I'm an original owner on Antonori. And when we moved in, we're on the cul-de-sac. I noticed that all the houses on the cul-de-sac were going to be green with a terracotta roof. And I called Andy Steinberg, the builder, and I said, "Ah, they're green, everything is green." He said, "No, no, 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 you have sage green, you have olive green, you have forest green. They're green with orange roofs." And he said, like Don or Jay said, "The color of the roof went with the color of the house." But we changed the colors of the house. This is our 10th home. I don't think there's anything wrong with having... I don't think there's anything wrong with having a choice. I think it adds to the... to the beauty of the community as opposed to maybe Jerry said, not so beautiful. I like the difference. You've got a modern fixture with a terracotta roof, and I don't know what the fixture is on the gray. But we have to think, I think, as Jay said, we're moving forward, not backwards. Thank you.
Steve?
Thank you. I just have a question. If this is a... do these roofs perform differently? I mean, because the tiles are designed differently with heavy wind law in different angles. Is there a difference in protection?
There is indicated that there is not. All tiles, concrete tiles used must comply with the Miami Dade Building Code. And it's identical for any type of material used on the roof. There are certain characteristics to a concrete tile, whether it is flat or barrel, that has advantages over asphalt shingles, for instance. But no, at this point, one may perform different for other reasons, but for hurricane protection, they're all about the same. I will note that new technology has come into play and none of the concrete tiles are fastened with nails anymore. They're all fastened with a special two-point fold, that adhesive that gives better adherence and resists the lift better than the nails do. So is that answering your question, Steve?
Yes.
Okay. Over here, Rosemary.
Hi, guys. I know you're all stupid hearing me, but here we go. I'm almost going on forty years of being an interior designer and in the designing world. So I've been just taking notes and I'm going to read them in random order. Thanks, Jerry. I really appreciate, you know, what you said and I agree with you a hundred percent. Woodfield Country Club, if you look at the architecture there, has all different homes that were built at different times and they can be upgraded and they have a totally different structure than our community because when we can start taking off the medallions and the fascia of our homes, then Jay's argument would make perfect sense because then the new fascia would match with flat roofs. And I recall when we were planning the entryway, that when ninety percent of us saw the original architectural drawings by the first landscaping company, they were so modern and Atlantish, we all recoiled and said, no, we don't want that, we want more transitional. We want something that's going to work with a softer look that we have as being traditional with a touch of a modern bent. And I think we're all using the word modern totally incorrectly because many of our lighting fixtures that are going in now are transitional. They're not modern. I mean, we know what modern is. And what we're looking at here are blocks. And just because you have an arched window doesn't make it modern. I don't see one medallion over the vault garage or a cross out or a urn holding point. I mean, I've been a designer of youth hotels and projects and I don't love... and I'm Italian, so I like Italy, but I would prefer not this architecture. But you know what? This is where we live. And if you go down the street and you have a flat... I don't care if it's gray, I don't care if it's green, I don't care if it's purple, if it makes sense. And there's a principle of design for repetition. So if we decided we were going to have green tile roofs and we could intersperse them with our copper roofs and our gold roofs, it would all make cohesive sense. But you can't just have three people saying, we want gray flat roofs because we think it's modern, because it doesn't make sense. And gray is not a trending color anymore, people. Go to Architectural Digest magazine, go to every single hotel. Woods, wood tones and beige. Those are the trends that are coming back into contemporary design. Not modern, contemporary. And, you know, when we talked about the front entrance, we all settled on something that was more cohesive. And we said we would keep some of the architecture there, the windows, and we'll change some of the lighting fixtures and we'll change the wall. But everybody's talking about the value of our homes. So they want to, you know, increase the value with more pickable quotes and increase the value with a new entrance. Well, I want to increase the value by not detracting from our design concept. Thank you.
Thank you, Rosemary. Go ahead, please.
Jill Smith. Actually, this man asked one of the questions I was going to ask about the roofs because I thought the flow of the wind would actually do better with the barrel shape because it would flow through instead of, you know, on flat tile. But if that's not the case, you think they both perform the same, I still think that the barrel shape would probably do better than the hurricane. But anyway, that's besides the point. The next thing is that I'm going to say is I agree with Rosemary and I agree with Jerry. Because, you know, these are the homes we bought, you know, and this community has one type of roof. And it just is going to change the whole look. It's not taking away anybody's rights. Jay was likening the roof to painting our houses. We might have changed the palette of the colors of the houses, but you can change that very easily. Once you put the roof on, like everybody said, it's going to be there forever. And you're not going to be able to change it if you don't like the color or if you don't like the tile. Whereas once it goes up, it's going to look funny that people... Your next door neighbor is going to have a different shaped tile. Because we're a cohesive community and we're a small community. We're not, we don't have a thousand houses. We don't have, we're not like some of the communities that you drive in and they have all these different communities on the sides, you know, within that community. But we're one community. And I think it would look terribly, you know, inconsistent if we allowed the flat tiles. I just, I mean, we're not a modern... It's like Rosemary said, we're not a modern community. Our houses are, you know, the old style, the Italian style. And I just think we should keep it the same.
Thank you very much, Steve. Go ahead, Ken.
Good evening. My name is Dick Sherman. I'm an original owner. I'm here with my wife, Arlene, for over nineteen years. One of the reasons why we came to this community, and we looked at quite a few others, was the look, the barrel items on the roof with the colors of the homes made it very attractive. For the last couple of years, for whatever reason, gray and white has been very dominant and been used often. I think it is a horrible color combination. If we have some gray roofs interspersed with our, you know... terracotta color, it's going to look like, and I use a Jewish expression, yokele neyeko. It doesn't fit in. It doesn't fit in. We would like it to be the way it is. Some of the new communities that are very expensive have this gray, modern look and it looks horrible to us. We want to continue to keep the colors the way they are with the barrel roofed roofs. And we're definitely against having the gray, modern roofs in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. Arne, I think you're up next.
Yeah, hi. My name is Arne Schorzer. And I've been here since day one. And I had to come up here today to talk to Robert while I was here. I told him, he told me that the tile samples were in the pool room. So I wanted to take a look. My opinion is just like Jerry said, Jerry spoke for me on this one. I don't want to see a change in style of roof. In other words, I like the barrel roof. I had a look at a dome today and we passed all the Valencia homes going down. They're all flat roofs with gray. I don't like that color. But what I do offer is the fact that I would not mind if you keep it a barrel roof, offer the gray barrel if somebody wants gray, because they will go nice with some of their homes here, and have two colors of the terracotta. Because that would kind of blend in with what the house colors are. But again, that's... this is my opinion. I'm not a flat roof guy, don't want it. I want to change what we have here. And I bought my house for the same reason. It's the style of home and the style of the roof. So that's my opinion as far as the colors go. And I also suggest to the board, do not send out a survey on this. You're never going to get consensus on it. It's not going to happen. So we can give you the input, you have to decide what's best for us. And that's why we go to Juend. Other than that, I'm fine. That's what I want to say.
Thank you. Ivan?
If anybody doesn't know me, my name is Ivan Fortno. I am the chairman of the Architectural Review Board. And I've had that position for the last three years. What the Architectural Review Board does, for those of you who have never put in an application, its job is to make sure that we follow all the rules and regulations in whatever project you're attempting to put into your house. Anything that has to do with the outside of your home requires an Architectural Review Board approval. There is a clause in our documents that if the Board, the Architectural Review Board, ARB, turns it down, you have the right to apply to the Board of Directors to overturn our decision or agree with it. And what the purpose of following the rules and regulations is really to maintain the basic aesthetics of our community. What it looks like. I don't think we'd want somebody to come to the Board and say, I want to paint my house pink. Now, we can approve that, but they can appeal to the Board. And the Board, whatever their feelings are, could come for that. And that's why we have standards. The Architectural Review Board has made a decision and has been recommended to the Board that no changes in the color or the look of our homes on the roofs. People say you can't make changes. We don't allow any changes in the color of your window frames. We also don't allow any changes intended bird cages or fencing. All has to stay the same. So it was the... and we studied this and I was on that trip down to the community. And what I found in... what was the name of the community?
Woodfield.
Woodfield. Ninety percent of the homes seem to be two stories high. So you don't get a picture of the roof that we have with all one-story homes, especially when you're driving down the block. Most of your focus is not on the roof, but it's on a lower level because of what you're seeing. So once again, it's the recommendation, and the Board knows this, of the Architectural Review Board, we do not make any of these changes in the flat roof or in the color scheme that we're using. Thanks.
I see, that's applause number...
I'm Nancy Chick and I've been here for fifteen years. For second owners. And I would like to point out that this is a country club community and there's no... we're a fifty-five and older community. To me, there's no comparison between a country club community and a fifty-five and older community. And this time, I agree with Jay also, with Jerry also. We need to keep the barrel tiles and I would like to even keep the terracotta color.
Thank you, Nancy. Go ahead, please.
Thanks, Don. I'm Andrea Stillman. I live on Adriano. My husband Howard and I have lived here about ten years now, which is hard to believe. But one reason why we like this community was its look. And its look is what it is with the barrel-shaped roofs. And of course, the colors were different at the time. And the fact that we now have a choice in colors, I think, has worked out very well for the community, certainly has detracted from it. But I think, I also believe that we should continue with the barrel-shaped roofs. I think we need the continuity to keep this community looking as lovely as it does. There are so many people who've recently moved here and say, one reason why they moved here is because when they drove in, they saw how aesthetically pleasing this community is. And I think to allow different styles of roofs would be a mistake. I do prefer the terracotta. For those of you who love gray, fashion-wise, it's going out. I understand everything now is, you know, everything is cycles. And the terracotta is a very traditional color for a barrel roof. Now, I have no problem with the three colors of terracotta that are up there. One is a little more brown and two that are more red. But I would appreciate if the Board would continue to support the idea of the barrel roofs. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like up there again? We got time now. Go ahead.
Okay, I'm Gary Cavendish, thank you. First of all, I want to thank the Board for having the foresight to think about a change. You changed the painting and now on the exterior, now you are giving us the opportunity to discuss the roofs. If we were looking at this picture and instead of it being gray, it were terracotta, flat, what would be your opinion? Still, okay. I like the idea of having an additional choice and that's why we have discussions. So my idea would be to allow the flat roofs, but not the gray. Keep it in the terracotta family. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Gary. Yes, gentlemen over there. Go ahead, sir. Just identify yourself first.
I'm Ed Cavendish. We've been here for about seven years. My question is, the difference in price between the flat and the barrel?
To the best of our knowledge, there is no substantial difference in the concrete tile between the two shapes.
Okay. The next question is, is there any discussion of maybe talking to a roofing company? If we gave them the business, that we could get a better price? Because everybody's going to want to pay differently depending on the time. If we could lock in a price, say for a certain number of years, because we're coming to the end of it. So we're talking about maybe a couple of years before the roofs are twenty years old? If we have a period, that we could...
And let me answer that question a little bit more. We've met with two of the biggest re-roofers in the neighborhood. They did a whole presentation for us. There's no difference as far as they were concerned with the shape as far as cost. There's some differences in how rainwater is gotten rid of between the two shapes. But number one, this town meeting is not about which one you should... After we make a decision, it's not a matter of, okay, the Board said to go with the terracotta barrel tile and that's it. You're going to want to interview two or three roofers when it's that time. And these are questions that you have to give the roofer. They can answer that better than, we're not educated to the point where a roofer is. As I said, right now, after listening to these roofers, I would go with a barrel tile. That's my choice, okay? But as I said before, it doesn't mean five years from now I wouldn't want to change. I think the barrel tile is better. I mean, they're all concrete, they put it into a form, and they take it out of the form, I mean, that's pretty much what it is. But when it comes time to actually doing your own roof, don't go by what we're saying here, you've got to talk to several roofers, get some prices, and then make that decision.
Okay, well, I think we've had the pleasure of leaks on both a flat roof and a barrel tile roof. Okay, it's the underlayment really that counts. My question was, as a community, can we get a contractor?
We asked that question.
And what was the answer?
First of all, you're not going to get 25 or 30 people to change their roofs all at the same time.
Right, I'm saying over a period.
Well, so what they, what both of them said, even if you have as few as five people who decide that they want to change their roofs at the same time, they will get a break. Now, the HOA cannot get into the point of saying to you, "Change your roof tomorrow because we can get you a deal." But the point is, if you came to Robert and said, "I'm in the market for a new roof," and three or four other people came to him and said, "I'm in the market for a new roof," then you guys could then contact the roofer and say, "We've got five people, what kind of a break can you give us?" They will do that, as few as five, okay? But you can't, it's not like the air conditioners, because this is a $40,000, $50,000 decision.
I know it.
Okay? So, your chances of getting more than five or six people at a time to do a roof, you know, just not practical. And the HOA cannot get directly involved, because if you have a problem with your roof, you're going to then come to Robert, not today, you're going to come to Robert and say, "Why did you give me this guy's name to do my roof? He did a terrible job." This Board's not going to get, let this community get into that position.
But as Jay said, these roofers were both amenable to work, these roofers were both amenable to working with a group, and the office can help facilitate that by being, you know, a focus area for people to come and say, you know, if there's a couple of people interested, add them to the list, you kind of thing. But to basically answer your question, sure, groups of residents that get together can show.
I think that would be, there would be 10% is a good savings, that's $30,000.
Right, and both of them were amenable to that, I suspect any roofer who wants to get into the community.
But they said, you know, even though we can't be in the business, the HOA of recommending that you use this contractor, that contractor, and just in general, we said, "We've got 300-plus homes here, is there some kind of deal that you could offer to our residents that we could, you know, let them know about?" They said, you know, "You're probably going to do 90% of the roofs over maybe a five-year period. The price of materials fluctuates so much that we can't give you a price today, and, you know, we held to that five years from now." And each roof is, you know, different size, has different square footage, things like that, but what these guys have been saying is, if you get a group of homes together, you know, five or 10 or 15 homes, that are all looking to do them, you know, over a couple of months, do them at the same time, then as a group you can negotiate, get together, and the office can help facilitate that. So, you let us know, "Hey, I'm in the market, I'm looking for a roof, we can put you in touch with a number of other people that are doing the same thing." This is one of the reasons we're getting ahead of it right now, is we know most of the homes are going to be done in the next five years. Something similar is being done, I know several, three homes right now are putting in a whole house generator, and they got together and have contacted different installers and are negotiating a better deal. So, that's something we can help you with, but we couldn't, you know, for two things, the liability and also, you know, negotiating a price that's going to be held for five years, doesn't make sense, but helping the homes kind of get connected, negotiate their own deal, we can help with that.
Go ahead, Steve.
Just real quick, when I first heard about gray, I said, "Oh, that'll look terrible." The next day, I walked out of here, looked to my left, and Meisner Falls, one of the first homes, has a gray roof. Everything I'm surrounded is terracotta, or whatever you call it. The gray did not look bad at all, so I would suggest, when you, tomorrow when it's daylight, go out there and you'll see one of the homes has gray.
Thank you, Steve. Is that one of the ones near the pickup ball courts?
No, it's this way.
Closer than this one, closer down.
I think it's actually two homes with a terracotta in between, I believe.
Yeah, and it does look bad at all. Can you see it from the swimming pool?
No, it's the parking lot.
Parking lot, okay, okay, I see what you mean. Okay, Bert?
Hi, I'm Bert Jones. I strongly disagree with the Board's concept as far as individuals negotiating pricing. I think the Board can take the responsibility to establish a game plan to include a period of time for a negotiation, and with my background in purchasing, I know you can negotiate pretty much anything, okay? So, my position would be that the Board establish a plan for individuals to be able to sign up, sign up, and actually have a roof replaced within a period of time that's negotiated, and come up with a volume discount, okay? Which then will benefit everybody, but each individual, knowing their own negotiation or a group of five or 10, that's not volume discount, okay? I would suggest that a committee of residents, as well as Board members, put together and to negotiate the volume discount. And I would be assured and almost guaranteed that you can find installers that will participate with this, and, you know, you may have 100 homes, 50 homes, but with the volume discount, you'll get cheaper pricing.
Hey, you were commenting on that. As Robert said, I don't think the Board will entertain taking a direct role in negotiation of roofing on individual homes. However, if we had an individual in the community that was experienced in purchasing, I think that person would be great to have as a focal point for the residents to contact and negotiate a contract with different roofers.
First of all, Bert Jones is retired, so I'm not looking for that challenge. I don't have a problem with participating in it, but I think this could be viewed as a Board's responsibility.
Thank you. The gentleman behind you?
Hi, my name is Erwin Levine, I'm at 68, 79 Adriano, and I have a question. Do the roof tiles fade? And so, what happens when I lose 10 tiles, and I cannot replace them with the same color as the ones I've lost? In Connecticut, an insurance company will code in your roof replacement where you cannot match the tiles exactly with the tiles that you have on the roof. So, what happens if we have someone who loses half the tiles? And how does he replace one with the same color?
I think that would, no answer from the rest of the Board, I think that'd be on a case-by-case basis. I think roofers can obtain various shades that will come as close as possible. If there happens to be an area where you cannot match exactly, that happens when you do asphalt shingles as well. Ben?
I may be mistaken, but I believe in Florida, there's a rule that you have to replace 25% of the roof. An insurer is required to replace the entire roof.
Slightly different than that, I don't know if you want to get into that, but if you want to, I'd be glad to expound on that a little bit, if anyone wants to hear what the 25% rule is. Okay. It should be noted that in 1920, in 1922, getting tired, 2022, Florida passed the following. For homes built after March 1st, 2009, when the 2007 Florida Building Code became effective, only that section of the roof needing repair needs to be replaced. For homes built under a prior building code, if more than 25% of the roof needs to be repaired in a 12-month period, the entire roof system must be replaced. The eighth edition of the Florida Building Code is currently in effect, it became effective, for your information, on December 31st, 2023. So, those are the rules dealing with the state law regarding 25% roof replacement, and I can give that to you in more detail, or I can email that to you. This is not, nothing to do with an insurer's requirement to either replace or repair a roof. This is state law, each insurance company has their own regulation dealing with roof replacement, but the state does have specifics dealing with the 25% rule. I don't know if that answers your question, Ben, but if it doesn't, if a tile isn't available, I guess a blue tarp. But anyway, yes, is there another question?
Yeah, if Connecticut was not an insurance company, that was a state company.
Correct, right, and this is a state company. Okay, are there any other questions or statements on roofing? And I will, once again, repeat, the purpose of this town hall is to solicit input from residents, as well as comments received over the next several weeks, until November 25th, when the Board will take up this issue again, and either adopt the proposed amendment that you saw with the changes, or amend that proposed amendment to reflect any changes the Board may wish to consider in their vote. So, once again, thank you very much for your input. Go, Dick?
What's the opinions of the other members on the panel?
Yes, if you have an opinion.
I agree with Jay, because I think the Board should very like the gray at the right time, if possible. I don't think different roofs...
I don't think, I don't think that having different roofs will make the community look worse. We have different colored houses, we have all sorts of different stumps in houses, and I don't think that that's necessarily true, I think that's just your opinion, and that's fine, but I don't think that the Board in general should try to impose their opinion on everybody's thinking. I certainly agree with Jay. You can disagree with me, because that's just my general philosophy of Board, of how Boards should work. Boards, a lot of Boards tend to over-regulate, I tend to be in favor of under-regulating for all possible. I understand that we want, that, you know, we want the community to look, we certainly wouldn't approve somebody doing a purple house, you know, but in this particular case, I don't believe that the rules that we are proposing would make the community look any worse, and I think it might even make it look better, but that's just my opinion, and that's why we're happy to see, to see whatever other people think.
Why are you sharing this? I think the best way is to give it up.
I've been wavering, but I've come to the opinion, my opinion is, that we bought into a plan of community with a certain look, and we should maintain that look with the barrel, that's my opinion.
Okay, anybody else on the Board?
Don.
Who? It appears that we have two members of the Board who would like to go to allow a variation in our rules in roofing. We have two members of the Board who would like to retain the current look, and I, as the President, will have an opinion, but I will wait until I hear from the rest of the community before I expose my opinion on that, and we'll leave it at that. Do we have any other question? Si?
Yes, I'm Si Agorski, for those who don't know me. And I have a few questions, but we're trying to still it up again. Have you considered the possibility of polling the community rather than having it done by fiat, so that you can get like a general sense of what everybody likes? Example, I look at that picture up there, the gray looks disgusting. I don't know what it...
Don't hold back!
You know, but maybe, but maybe a flat, flat roof that's terracotta, maybe that would look better, who knows? It just is interrupted, if you will, and I'm not dead good at it. So, anyhow, I'm thinking about the polling the community, and that's up to you guys, you guys will decide. Another question is, and I'm sort of at sea here, there's a consensus apparently on the Board that we need to replace the roofs pretty soon. How do we get to that conclusion? Have some of them come apart lately, or do we have? How do we know we're imminently in that condition?
Okay, the answer to that is, we see that, evidence of that by the frequency of a red pickup truck and other roofing companies in the neighborhood repairing roofs in small sections. Some have done that two, three, four, five times, mighty roof has been repaired four. At some point, it gets to be a little onerous at $700 or $800 a repair. The answer is that the concrete roof tiles themselves will last 50 or 60 years. The problem is in the underlayment, which the concrete tiles are put there to protect. The underlayment, which has been down there, it's been exposed to the heat and the cool heat, and the hot weather, and the rain, and the moisture, the nails going through the deck have rusted in some spots where the water has gone through, the rust has expanded, the nails created a little channel for the water to go through, through the sheathing and onto the ceiling tile in your house. So, there's a definite, definitive mechanism like where a roof tends to leak. It probably is not through the concrete tile itself, all of these concrete tiles are doing the same thing to protect the underlayment. There are different underlayments you've been put down, there's a buildup, there's a self-adhesive, there's two-layer, three-layer, a number of options strips over the, over the sheathing where the joints are, there are adhesives you can put in, there are a number of options, but the bottom line is, you know your roof is leaking and needs replacing when you see it.
There's one more piece to that answer, Si, and that's that homeowner insurance is beginning to require it for renewals or for if you're making a change to another company. They're requiring new roofs and won't insure your home with a 20-year-old roof.
Got you, thank you.
Obviously, and I understand, thank you for your answer, Don, because I'm thinking, well, geez, concrete tiles can last forever, but it's, I guess it's the underlayment that doesn't, and the next crazy question that I have you, and this is crazy, can they take the, and save the concrete tiles that we have and just replace the other parts?
The answer to that is theoretically, yes. If you have enough labor and you're going to spend it up and spend money that otherwise would not just be necessary, you could have a laborer for weeks taking these tiles off and stacking them, and then putting them back after you finish the underlayment, but as we can see from the one roof that was done on Antinori, in one day or a day and a half, that roof was gone and a new underlayment put on, and they're just waiting for the new concrete tile. To do that in piecemeal fashion is cost prohibitive. Is it possible? Yes, but I certainly would not want to pull nails out of every one of those tiles. Okay, last round here, Fran?
Okay, yes, I just want clarification. If the Board decides that we're going to stay with the barrel-shaped roofs, will there be a choice of color, or are you going to insist on one color? I know, as I said before... I know, as I said before, I had no choice. When we built the house and I picked the, the color of the, uh, house, the roof went with it. I have disliked the terracotta roof on my house since day one. Now, it's barrel, fine, but I was wondering if there would be choices once, uh, we decide on barrel?
Okay, the wording that has been chosen, and is once again up for amendments, should we so choose, is the roof color palette shall match the family of colors as currently exists in the community. And then we made it include a white to medium gray, which may or may not be in the final. But, but the first part of that wording is how we have worded the colors available shall match the family of colors as currently exists in the community.
Look, let me, I don't think you're answering us. Did you, did she answer your question? Fran, did he answer your question? Because I, I think the answer is, sorry. I, I think there are three separate issues that we're considering, each of which are separate. One is, should we allow flat or not? Second one, should we allow different colors or not? And the third one is, should we allow streaks or not? And those are three separate, we, I think we would agree now that those are three separate issues, and we could, we could change one, we could decide to do one, two, or three, or none of those.
Yeah, but Gary, we're not talking about, not talking about shape. We're talking about color in this case.
That we go with the barrel, because apparently it's the more traditional shape. If we go with a barrel roof,
That's another, another one.
The color, will we have a choice or will we look at all?
That's another.
We can have terracotta, that's it.
We have, we guess, we could do, we could do a barrel, we could do barrel roofs with gray, if that allows gray.
Okay, that's all I'm asking.
I'm not saying we will vote for that, but that's, that's one, that's a second, that's a separate choice. There are three separate issues. Do we allow flat or not? Do we allow gray or not, and do we allow streaks?
Okay, but I'm not asking, I'm just saying, it's a family, family of colors. That does not mean one color, that's a family.
Because we got into a discussion of a light brown, dark brown, tan, what would you, have your, uh, anyway.
So, um,
Yes, go ahead, Jay.
Okay. So my, my question originally was, how are you going to solicit comments from the rest of the community? You just mentioned, I thought you were going to take our feedback from tonight and then, um, listen to it, but I didn't. Are you going to send out some kind of survey? You mentioned that you were going to get more feedback from the community. How are you going to get more if they didn't come to the meeting tonight?
We've, we've asked for that in the eBlast, we've asked for that in the Tiffany Lake Times. A number of opportunities for residents to provide Robert their, their opinion on this. Uh, the board can discuss it a little further if it wants.
Well, I mean, we're video, we're videotaping, and we're putting it out on the website and notifying all residents that it's on the website, and that they... I'm just thinking that if they didn't care enough to come tonight. Well, but there are snowbirds that are in here, and we want to hear from them. We want them to feel like they're participating. As long as they will solicit that, how are you going to tabulate that? I mean, if they just come in and talk to Robert, how are you going to? Well, Rob, Robert is excellent. Okay. Anyway, but I did want to comment that my house, right now, has a lighter shade of, it's a, it's a, it's like a, a beige-y color. And that was what was on the house when it was built, because it was an ar, painted orange at the time. But my house does have a lighter shade. It's like a little bit lighter than the, the lightest one over there, um, with the barrels. Um, but, um, it is a lighter color. So I do believe that if we go with the barrel, which I support, we should have a choice of color, and a family of colors. Yes.
Jill, the answer is, is it on your house now?
It's on my house now.
Then, then it is an existing color, and you should be allowed to continue with that color.
Right, we're not doing the same.
We say, family of colors as currently exist.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that people seem to think that the dark terracotta is the only color in the neighborhood. There are a lot of people in this room, I think, that feel that thought.
Thank you.
But my house has a lighter color.
Thank you. Go ahead, Steve, you were next.
Yeah, so all the roofers use a styrofoam underneath, right? Or, or what are they?
All adhesive usually, right, do you mind?
And do they still do the nailing technique and all that?
It's not recommended.
What, what's the roof set of 20 years old that have been done in this new method? Anything in 20 years, how are they doing?
Who knows? Peter, who knows? How?
Well, I'm sorry, I came in late and I missed probably something that would have been very important to my question. The underlayment, is it the same on all of the, so it's the same thing? So then, we have, the, the choice, in my mind, should be to maintain these roofs, these roofs, in the way that we're viewing them now, to me would be the ideal situation. And the question then would become a matter of how much is the underlayment, and what, and what can we find out from the roofer as far as that goes to reduce our costs or keep them within a certain, uh, within a certain range?
Right, this, the topic of underlayment is not part of this discussion, because that does not affect the shape, style, or color and appearance. Once again, there's a number of different options you could use for underlayment. It was a single ply, double ply, built up, self-adhesive, uh, or a combination thereof, so. But once again, each tile has its own recommended underlayment.
Okay, well, I'm following that, and I'm also following the fact that the roofer is going to put a particular underlayment on the roof. Is the homeowner going to be able to distinguish what underlayment they want?
They will be discussing.
Underpose to the roof.
Has nothing to do. Once again, the homeowner is the one to negotiate after he selects the tile, the type and the options he has for the underlayment. The board does not get into that, that's strictly between the homeowner and the roofer.
I, I'm following. So therefore, to negotiate with a roofer that may have varying costs initially, based on what you choose for the underlayment or anything else, then I don't see how you can do that unless you come up with some figure, uh, initially, and index that over the period of time that, uh, that this should, that this should occur, because it's going to take maybe five years before the whole community reacts. The guy bidding the job is going to say, "Hey, you know, this is what it is now. There's somebody else, you know, and you're going to have other issues, because you're going to, because you have to..."
We had, we had a discussion on this topic. But yes, the answer is that the board, uh, if we walk into, will not entertain being the negotiator or point, uh, entity in negotiating a price. We can correlate the number of people who want to do it and supply that to somebody and to a roofer.
Okay, so we're not up to that yet?
No. Once again, we're still talking about the roof material. Okay, we're going to end this. You have one other question?
Yes, I do. It's one thing to talk about the colors, the styles, all of this all. In my mind, the more important issue is the price. Also, it's my understanding, or belief, that if the board takes the responsibility, and always has, as far as painting the homes, what color is it? Which is far cheaper than re-roofing. And I would again encourage the board to consider having the involvement and the control as far as negotiating. And it can be established that the homeowners can sign up when they want, and over a period of time, there's massive bulk pricing that has been negotiated opposed to expecting each other, they are to get together and then do that. It just doesn't make sense if you do it for painting, you don't do it for roofing.
Painting is an HOA expense, roofing is your expense.
I understand. You can negotiate in volume where the individuals cannot do that as a bulk purchase price. And you can establish timing for individuals to sign up and agree to have the job done by, so it's all free.
Thank you, Bert. Okay, we, uh, have a couple of other items, and then we'll be discussing the 2025 budget and adopting, uh, those numbers later on this evening. But this will end the roofing discussion. Thank you, please come back on November 25th, and we'll hear more about it. Thank you very much.